Yeah, so I don't have much of an update for you. I had a policy book, policy pamphlet I'd left in front of your twenty year meeting table there. For the record, my name's Justin Farrelly, man of Lakeview and Fort Rock, Silver Lake, Soil and Water Conservation Districts. What I've provided you is Crip County's copy, or a copy of Crip County's natural resource policy. They had a political action committee work through this policy, work through and create this policy. It was then adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, fall of 2017. What you'll find in there is that it lays out a lot of the direction that Crip County would like to go, some of the socio-economic, some of the agricultural impacts, logging practices, processes they'd like, the goals and processes they'd like to keep in place. They've done this in part, you guys don't know, James and Mark, if you're aware, but the county is a cooperating agency under the NEPA process, the National Environmental Policy Act for public lands decisions. But Lake County, excuse me, so is the Soil and Water District. So Brad and I have been sitting in on all these wilderness meetings, investing quite a bit of time here recently. But Lake County being eighty percent public lands, I think being involved in the NEPA process from a county perspective, or a county commissioner perspective as well as the SWCB is critical. This policy gives the ability to align some of your goals out of the hopes of the county, set those forward ahead of time, have it on file with the both federal agencies, or all three federal agencies for that matter, making decisions in Lake County. The Fort Rock Soil and Water District specifically asked me to bring this forward and ask that the commissioners form a committee to work down the road of creating a policy like this, if you guys are in favor of that. So I didn't need much time. I do look forward to coming back, or you guys asking me to come back to see where we take this in the future.
So I like the idea of pulling the committee together to be able to take a look at it. Crip County has pulled this together, we have a boilerplate there. It needs to be reviewed so that if we were to put a national resource policy together for Lake County that affects our county, that side of it, I have, you know, I haven't reviewed any of this.
Oh, no, I'm not asking for any decisions today, I'm just providing, they see you with the background of why we're providing it as well.
So whatever, just to jump right into forming a committee, suggestions on representation on a committee based on this.
You know, I would perceive a couple hay farmers, a couple timber industry representatives, a couple public lands, ranching representatives. I would think this Soil and Water District, through our statutes, probably O.S.U. extinction is the first one that comes to mind, county representative, obviously.
So would you have any of the agency folks, state, federal?
Yeah, that's a slippery slope.
Yeah.
Some of those, I don't know if they can even be on the committee.
Yeah, it would depend on how it was named and what partnership role they play. I, to me, yeah, that's a real slippery slope, to be honest. I fully expect kickback from public agencies if you guys go down this road, and that's what happened in Crip County at the start. I was on the phone with Commissioner Crawford up there yesterday, because if you were to type this in online, you'll see some OPB and some M. Bolton reports that came out when we were working through it. There was a lot of kickback from the feds that it was going to make working environment, working conditions, own relationships harder, according to Commissioner Crawford yesterday. It's been, it was fall of seventeen I adopted it, his remark since then is that it actually made things easier, it's laid a lot of things out on the table, put them out there ahead of time. I mean, one of his comments was, to be clear, that by providing this to them, they do not have to follow it. But it sets a consistent framework for what the county would hope to have going forward. And we've had discussions, but Brad, as you're well aware, you and I have been sitting through for the last six months, in my mind, some guidance like this would be pretty helpful.
Questions?
I think it's a great idea, just a brief overview, obviously I have to read this whole thing to kind of go through it, and I'd like to actually call some of the other commissioners around the state that have similar policies and kind of lean on them, get an idea of how it did affect them. You make a great point in terms of, even though you might get a little bit of pushback from the agencies themselves, it actually makes things easier and gets things out in the open where everyone kind of knows where each other stand, and I think it might actually be really beneficial to our county, especially in regard to some of the current things that have been going on here in Lake County.
Yeah, I agree with that, a hundred percent.
Didn't Crip County also hire a natural resource person on staff?
They did, they hired Tim DeBoo, who was a retired research researcher. I'm by no means campaigning that way, I think Crip County has some different issues and faces some different growing pains than Lake County does at this point. However, you know, Crip County was twenty-five years behind O'Shughness County, I'm not sure Lake County's not twenty-five years behind. Crip has some of those growing pains and a different makeup of goals and objectives of people within the community.
I think there's areas within this that, not reading this, that can be beneficial. To talk on the positive side, over the years, working with our agencies through stewardship contracts and other things, Lake County is further ahead than many counties as far as being a partner with the federal agencies, and being able to help look at some forest health and forest management and different things in different ways. So on one aspect, we're quite a bit further ahead than several other counties. As a matter of fact, Lake County was looked at, the ten-year stewardship contract that we were part of several years ago and everything. So we've been a great partner, for the most part. The challenges come down, like this cooperating agency, and this is where this could be the tool is, is whenever there's a settlement agreement through the court system, and then the agency has to follow that settlement agreement, is hopefully through the court part of it, the agency will say, well, in our county, we have this guideline that they want to operate by, and maybe help through that court process is where I see this possibly being pretty helpful.
Agreed, yeah. Mark, did you have anything?
I do want to hear your card and want to visit with you about a couple things.
Okay, Matt, will you flip up my email address? I did not bring cards with me. We'll try to be as low profile as possible.
Before Justin leaves, I want to make a comment. As cooperating agencies, and I'll stay within the boundaries, Justin has done a heck of a good job representing Lake County as far as our ranching community and even the county itself. Appreciate you being there, I lean on you, appreciate your opinions, and we are making what difference we can, Justin, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I really appreciate it. Just one last thing, from my point of view, I think that, again, I think this is a great idea, I think that, Brad, I think you're right, as far as cooperation with a lot of the different agencies, we've done better than a lot of other counties probably around the state.
I agree with that.
But I think in terms of providing a little bit of long-term stability for future commissioners and in the county, this kind of helps lay out a policy for the county where we all stand, so future commissioners coming in, it's established, you know, like our demographics, our climate and everything else, and where we stand on all these different things, and so we can always kind of revert back to the policy, and it's not just about where the previous commissioners might have stood on something, it's where we stand as a county, and we can kind of agree on where we're at.
Correct.
So I think this is a really great idea, and I'll definitely do it kind of personally, so thank you.
Okay, you guys got my information, so anytime, let us together.
Thank you, thank you, Justin. With that, you got us right back on time, pretty close. And Hannah's in here.
Here she comes.
Here she comes.
You guys need like a break or anything?
We've done that to Justin.
Oh, okay. I think before this topic, you might want to.
Are you telling us we're going to need a break?
We may need one after.
Same idea.
So up next is our budget officer, Ann, and she's going to give us an update on some possible projections and everything. Our next meeting is when we do our assumptions on the budget, correct?
Yes, so that's scheduled for February nineteenth.
No, we haven't seen one.
So this morning, we're going to focus on the current budget we're in right now, eighteen ninety, and probably primarily more on general fund, however, we'll touch briefly on some other funds as well. So the documents I'm handing out, you have seen in your monthly reports, one is a cash flow summary that is specific to general fund, and then the other one is kind of our budget appropriation level by department and by the fund, and so that's what I'm going to discuss this morning. The first one is that cash flow summary for general fund. At this point in time, we have three major revenue sources for general fund, it's the beginning fund balance, property taxes, and the payment and live tax program from the federal government. All three of those right now have created some issues for us for this current fiscal year we're in. The first one was the beginning fund balance. During budget time last year, in balancing that budget, we kind of overestimated a little bit what we thought we'd start July first with, and we came in at a deficit position. So right off the bat, July first, we were in a, like I said, a deficit spot. The second big thing that happened this year was property taxes, and before we discussed that, but the Ruby Pipeline valuation that the state imposed on Ruby impacted what we anticipated for property taxes significantly. There was two things that the state did with that valuation. The first one was they look at the overall company, and then they decide how much of that is attributable to Lake County, and then they get it down to that. The second thing is they even look at the amount of pipe that's in Plantham and Lake County, and they change that value as well. So Dabnol's provided information to the commissioners in October, talking about the impact that that Ruby Pipeline valuation had. Basically, Ruby's tax bill went down seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. General Fund, that impact was around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We also anticipated increasing values with construction and the normal allowable value increase on properties, and then that increase didn't occur either. So the net impact to general fund was a deficit of about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, again on top of a beginning fund balance that didn't come in as anticipated either. So this cash flow summary, I'm looking at those dollars, those impacts, against what we know are fixed costs. We know our salaries and our benefits are fixed costs. We hope that in materials and services, people are prudent and they save dollars where they can, but what I look at is what the trend has been. So I can look at years in the past, I can look at this year and say, all right, on average, we spend about ninety-seven thousand dollars a month on materials and services. So this report gives me that end of June dollar figure to use for the budget on July first. Again, with the three revenue sources being beginning fund balance, taxes, and PILT, when we see that beginning fund balance go down, we have just limited a revenue source. In essence, our revenues are not keeping pace with our costs. So bottom line, that's what I'm looking at. I am conservative, I tend to, I'd rather plan for the worst but then be surprised by something on the upside. So right now, this is a conservative estimate looking forward. But it does cut that beginning fund balance to the tune of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if we were going to take exactly this year's budget and cut two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of it, that's what we'd be looking at having to do for next year. The other thing to note on this estimated cash flow summary is that we are not touching contingency. We're hoping that everybody comes in and doesn't have some extraordinary need that would require a contingency spending plan. We also, I'm anticipating not having to transfer as much resources to some that were budgeted, specifically public health, and that's according to our contract with Lake District Hospital. I'm hoping that the building and planning department start seeing some other revenue dollars from Red Rock, that helps offset their costs and our support there. And then we also had planned a transfer to the railroad in case of different liabilities that could occur there. I don't know if that'll happen or not, so I'm saying we might end up hanging on to those dollars in general fund. And then the big one, the significant one that we've talked about in the past too, is the support to the road department. Again, this plan, this cash flow summary that's before you right now, would say, right at this point in time, we're not sure general fund can support that level of support to the road department.
And it was set up that way, that transfer only happens if we're in the financial, or with all to do it.
Right.
It's not a guaranteed transfer.
Right, and so that discussion will still occur, I'm just saying, as of right now, when I'm looking at trying to predict what will happen as of July first, and using a number for budgeting purposes, right now, I'm not sure we can afford it. A lot of information comes in in the next couple of months that can make this picture look a little bit more rosy, but right now, in a conservative spot, this is where we're at. There are a few other revenue impacts right now that I'm looking at too. We do have some grants in both, well, in the sheriff's department, that the state is a little bit behind on and catching up with, and that's both the ATD grant and the emergency management grant. We do have invoices into the state, there's more paperwork that's occurring, but I'm predicting that there might be a little bit of lag on some of those revenue dollars. There's also a BLM contract involved there too, so are there, now that I've talked and talked and talked, do you have any questions on that cash flow issue?
I have a question, and it might be more generated toward Dave, but on the Ruby Pipeline, nobody's seen this coming, that it was going to come in seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand or whatever, close to that, short. And to me, it's, I probably shouldn't say it publicly, but it's a little bit fishy to me, why that happened.
So I got right after that, and our office was just made aware of it on August sixteenth, well past budgeting season. So it's a combination of things that may be upset. One, they were late on notifying us, and two, how could they make such an adjustment, such a huge adjustment in one year? So it was kind of like peeling an onion, when I got, trying to track this down, and I finally got to the core of it, about a third of the adjustment came from allocation. So the whole project is valued as a utility, from an income stream, not necessarily the cost of the pipe to construct it. And then they allocate it by state, then they allocate it by county, then they allocate it by tax areas, and they had an allocation error between Plantham and us, which is about a third of that money, which is a one-time hit to level up. The bad news is, is that it's a third, that will, that hit will continue to hit us every year because those monies went to climate. So that was an allocation thing. The other side is, the fuel price is dropping, and it's on an income approach stream, and so the cost, the profit in the sale of that gas is down, so they made an adjustment for that on the income approach evaluation for the overall project, which was a big hit. So what, like Dan Shown brought to me, he said, well, if we can only raise taxes three percent by major fifty, then they can only lower valuation by three percent. That's not the case. Valuation of properties, whatever it's going to be, no matter what the market's going to do, so we have no control of that. What we do need though, is we need this information pre-budget season so we can adjust our sales because we can't control the wind. So with that, I've been to Salem twice, I'm going back again to get some legislation changed so we can be notified of this by May, is about the sense of it. And I've been with them when they're talking about their process of how they do their evaluations, and they have to send evaluation to the company, and they have an appeal period that has to pass, and then finally it comes back, and then they have to approve it, jump through their hoops, and then they finally send it to the counties. And by statute, they don't have to let us know what that value is until August fifteenth. So they were within their rights of ringing the bell late for us. But my argument was, and it was heard well, because we're such a small county, we only generate thirteen million dollars in taxes, four million of that come from Ruby Pipeline, and when you drop that from a four million to a three point two five, that's a huge hit. And they didn't, no one really stopped to think what that was going to do to our community. And so, anyway, I'm going back to argue that to see if we can get that set. I've had two people from Salem tell me they were personally going to make sure that we were going to be notified in May, but they couldn't, they couldn't tell me what the appeal value would be because that would be before the appeal period was over. But that would be a good informational tool to give Ann to work with and for you guys to make better decisions from. So that's where that came from. Our office didn't have a lot of skin in the game for that valuation, we just get it and work with it. So on the local level, we kind of held our own as far as picking up new construction last year, and I'm looking forward to doing some reappraisal for this year, looking forward to feeling two full-time appraisals. So we should be seeing some increase from that.
What just spooks me is that if they can do it one year, can they do it again to us?
So when I was talking to them, they reassured me that they wouldn't see a value swing like that because of the fuel price market is already, is leveled out, and so we don't have the allocation issue anymore, and the income stream is not going to drop from last year to this year, because they've already started to do some research for me for this year. So they're saying we shouldn't see a hit from that like we did this year. The other, the flip side of the coin is, this Jordan Cove project, if that goes in, they've already got the right of way for two pipelines when they put Ruby in, they got the, and they got all the permits and all that. If Jordan goes, Cove goes through, we'll see another pipeline come through, and we'll have two of these, and that will be a great thing.
And I agree with you, but I just don't want history to repeat itself, and so maybe if that pipeline ever does come through, that maybe we can, and fuel prices, we anticipate fuel price drop, that we're just set up so we don't take a hit like this again.
Well, see, I rode this horse on the other side. I was there when the first check came in, and we had no idea what the valuation was going to be when it came through, and it was like a gift that we couldn't believe. And it comes and goes, and you can't control the market, it's just, it's going to be what it's going to be. The thing is, we have to be able to get the information and make the right decisions because you can't, it's hard to budget when you don't know what you have to work with.
So on the other side of the coin, just, I don't want to take too much time on this next year's projection, we should have some other things coming online, a little bit more taxation that maybe some of the pain that they can go down, do you got any thoughts on that date?
Right, so I was just discussing with Ann, we've got, we've got a significant pilot program, there's some solar stuff going on, it's in construction, and there's six projects that are in the construction stage, they're supposed to be completed this year, I'm kind of banking on maybe four of those six being completed, and I was talking with Ann, and that was going to be an increase of around three hundred, how much a year?
To general fund, it'll be about a hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah, a hundred and seventy to the county side. I was looking at R and D, but anyway, and we have some other little projects going on, so that should be, they'll fill and build it. You know, every time something's depreciating out, somebody else is coming out on new construction, so.
I have something to add to you.
All right, Mr. Cooper.
I haven't had a chance to be with Ann on this, but I just want to throw it out there to the commissioners, think about when was the last increase on building permits around Lake County, or if there has ever been.
It's been a while, for the most part, on the building side, we've been trying to keep the cost of those reasonable to attract, industry attract, people to build, to attract people to Lake County. There's a need, we haven't even been basically.
For the people's side or for the industrial, commercial side?
For, to attract people to come to Lake County, whether it's residential, industrial, or whatever. On the industrial side, there's the enterprise zones, there's all kinds of other tax breaks and different things to do, but on the building permit side of it, it definitely needs to be looked at, at least inflation factor put on there.
Absolutely. Just throw it out there. Dave, who are you working with in the legislation to try and keep this from happening again? You're saying you're taking another trip up?
The ATD side of the Department of Revenue's legislation representative, his name is Mark, and I'm working with him, and then FTE side, there's a general manager, come by my office, I can do that.
Sure, that's fine, yeah, love to sit down with you and talk more about that, so that'd be great, thank you, Dave.
So in general, about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars short in this current year, with the beginning fund balance, the revenue is coming in on the pipeline. What the budget committee and the commissioners have done over the years is talking straightforward is the transfer to the road department, ten, two hundred and fifty thousand, and only as the monies are available, that's where that we're able to basically survive this year. It doesn't mean that that makes budgeting for next year real simple, because things get them quite a bit tighter, but that's been over the years, some transfers and everything has been where we've been able to have a little bit of security for these types of things that happen, so that's, just needs to be said out there, that's where we're at.
So the February nineteenth meeting is where we'll start setting those goals, making those assumptions and targets for general fund to start the budget build process for nineteen twenty, and I've had a list of decisions by consensus that you'll provide, transfers for support is one of those topics, and so we'll go through all of that budget build process on the nineteenth.
Very good. Anything else, any other questions?
I just, in the overall budget, I did provide another, like against appropriations where we're at, and a few resolutions that I know I will be bringing forward soon, if you want me to highlight those right now or not.
I can come by your office later and we can just talk it out. I actually have a couple of questions, but we can go into them later, it's no worries. Thank you.
That sounds good, that sounds okay. So also, as part of your packet, is my investment policy, but I kind of feel like maybe you want to hold off on that until we have a broader policy discussion.
The investment policy, you want to carry that forward just before the assumptions, maybe?
Sure, sure.
What the board's desired. Okay, let's do that, Ann. All right, thank you. Thank you for everybody that come and listened to, I asked Ann to come and just sort of put it out there so department heads, elected officials, would have a feel for where we're at, budget wise, the current year moving forward. So moving on with our next agenda item, eleven fifteen, Commissioner Albertson.
So I'll just make this as quick as possible. Coming on as a new commissioner, or a new employee here, to be, how should I put this? I just, we don't have a policy book, a policy manual for the county. And how I envision this is that we create a policy book where every employee can go to their department head and ask to see the policies. to their department head and ask to see the policies for that specific department head, for that specific group. In other words, like Dave and Jake would not have the same policies on different things, but we'll, we'll have a general policy book that the commissioners will have or the department heads will have that will affect every, every employee and just make things run smoother. And if there's a policy or you're told there's a policy, we can go and say, here it is in this section of our policy manual. I did go down to Stacy down at the clerk's office and she pulled out a lot of the policies. What happened is in the minutes from years past, the commissioners would make a policy, but the policy was never written out. And so from here on, I would like for the administrative assistant where we make a policy as commissioners, that it's his or her duty to write that policy out and put it in the policy manual. And so for all the department heads, you're going to have different policies, but of course, the Sheriff's Office is going to have his own policy on how he wants his officers to dress, da, 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 da. Same way with Jake, same way with Dave, same way with the Planning Department. We're all going to have different policies in that aspect, but we're all going to have a general policy of what is expected out of us as employees. And it's not to put a finger on anybody, it's to help protect us also in time of a lawsuit or anything else, so we can kind of see where our guidelines are and what we can do as a group for the benefit of the county. And so what I'd like to do is have this policy book completed from the department heads and from me, I'll be heading up, if it's no problem with these guys, I'll be heading up the general policy book and to glean that information. And what I want from you guys is, as department heads, is if you think it needs to be in the general policy manual, that you'll be bringing it to me and then we'll put it in there. And so I'm going to do this in a one-year time period. So by this time next year, we have our policy manual completely finished or at least pretty close to finished. So there will be some of the things, same things stated in our employee handbook, that will be in the policy manual. And, but it's not the employee handbook. This is just a policy manual with all the policies in it for the county.
So just in discussion, thanks for bringing this forward. We definitely, it's multifaceted. So what we have in place is departments have their own internal policies that over the years, the direction was whenever you do your policy, internal policies, take them to H R, have them reviewed, make sure that they don't overlap into the handbook, don't overlap into the union site and our liabilities are kept at a minimum. Make sure that, that we're not going against union contract and so on. But the real weak area, I believe, is as the Board of Commissioners over the years, we accept policy or we have consensus in a board meeting and not absolutely send it in a policy that way, but it's consensus and it's the direction, like your handbook says, policy written or implied. That needs to be cleaned up a whole bunch. But I know internally within the departments, I believe that they're all doing that pretty professionally, but it'd be great is if I could go say, okay, what's your policies, Dave Berman, in your, your department or Sheriff in your department? So, but be sure, we need to make sure that H R is a big part of that. I mean, that's where our insurance, our union contracts, everything. We have to make sure that, that we're following all of those rules as you're working that. So what you want, I guess, is probably consensus of the board to take this around.
But it, it sounds more like you're talking about having, you've got a county policy handbook and then you'd have more like a protocol for the departments.
Yeah, see, I don't know how to say that, like, let's go use Dave Berman as an example. He'll have, say that something happens to Dave and somebody has to step into that role. And he's got some contracts out there, whether it be with the airport, the railroad, construction contracts. How are, how is the person that steps into his role going to fill those shoes? And, and so what you're saying is true, but what I'm saying is, is that how can we streamline this? Because he's going to have policy on contracts that you wouldn't have or H R wouldn't have or Ann wouldn't have, but you see what I'm saying? I'm not explaining it very well, do you?
That's right.
I apologize.
Could I, um, just in, in conversation purposes, I, I think it, I think it would help commissioners more than anything and new commissioners coming on and new people coming on, if everyone kind of knew where they stood. And so I think what, what we've been talking about and I think what you want is a long-term stability to, to operations within the county as far as the commissioners are concerned especially because like, say you have a new commissioner, hasn't done this before, but prior to that commissioners, you had the same commissioners for a long period of time, they had consensus among the board. They decided this is the best way to do things. New guys come along, we don't, we don't really know where to reference to some of those past policies and consensuses that they've had in the past, other than go back and read minutes for the last eight to ten years. And, and it's hard to glean some of the information. I think whatever we do, obviously, we will want to work with H R and, and we find ourselves, I personally find myself reading statutes a lot to try and find where we stand. But when you have a commissioner that comes in for, say, just a minimum of four years, a huge amount of knowledge can be acquired in that time, after which that's gone and you're starting over again. And I think it's hard on the employees that are here as well because you're dealing with a wet behind the ear commissioner who doesn't really know how to navigate a lot of these things, but if he could have a reference book to look back on the policy, the policy could be changed, absolutely. But if you can establish where we are and glean from that knowledge that past commissioners had had and experience, they can put that down and as laws change and statutes come in, we can kind of know what we need to change and where to start rather than just go off of minutes and consensuses that past commissioners had had. Because all commissioners are going to be wanting to do things differently, they're going to look at things differently and it's probably a good thing, but at least they can have an idea of, of where to start because it's not written down anywhere, a lot of the policies that, that the past commissioners have possibly had and as far as a consensus other than just minutes. And it helps, it helps the commissioners like Brad, for instance, who's left with us. So he doesn't have to go back and explain multiple things. This is why we did this, we did this for this reason. So we can kind of get an idea of where we want to go and if there is something we want to do differently, we know what we can change, we can go straight to the policy. And it helps us know where all you guys and the department heads are at and why you do things and, and the process that, that everyone goes about things. So it, it helps us just for information and educational purposes. I think it'd be really good long-term for the county if the commissioners know. Go ahead.
My, my question is, is this, is someone going to write this down as a script for us department heads to, to try to get to where you want? What, I'm confused because you went from the way someone's dressing to...
I, I just use, I, I mean, I used to, I used to dressing in the fact with the sheriffs because they have a uniform.
Oh, right.
Right. You don't have a uniform.
That's right. You want to write down this so we know what it is you...
Well, it's more what you want, actually, as a department.
We're giving you the freedom to create your own policy.
And then, and that way we would at least know where everyone's at.
Some of them we're going to agree with you on, some of them we're not. But some of them, I'm, I'm going to put in there that you guys are going to say, hey, this isn't going to work. And I'm fine with that, but we don't have anything wrote down to the fact that I can go to say, this policy isn't going to work or... Go ahead, Ginger.
But I'm wondering, what I'm wondering is if maybe thinking of, of procedures and operational manuals for each one of the departments where it's, when you say policy, it sort of sounds to me like something written in stone. Operational procedures and that sort of thing are more fluid and they describe what's, what the department does and then what the people in the department, you know, what the goal of the, the department is and then what the people in the department do and, and guidelines or whatever you want to call it. So that, I mean, that's just a, a thought. And then there might be a boilerplate that you come up with that can go to each department. Each one's going to be different, but at least to have some sort of organizational structure to get started. So I, I have some information, if you're interested, that we can talk about another time, but...
So I, I believe a good direction commissioner to go with this is, is to, today is to bring it forward, to have some discussion, work session. Have, let's have a staff meeting where that's what we've worked on, which is we have that dialogue back and forth. Give our H R a chance to look at some things our department has elected officials. Make sure, for me, I depend on my department has elected officials to take care of their departments and to set that internal policy in if it's ran through J so that it, it doesn't go against our union contracts and on and on, all that stuff, our handbook and everything. And it goes through legal counsel and all that stuff. They're the professionals in their, in their departments. And so I wouldn't mind being able to go and say, I'd like to look at your internal policy and procedures, you know, but I'm more concerned myself on exactly what you're talking about over here is new commissioners come on, being able to, I, I put every policy together, have melody of their policy I can bring together for you guys before you came on. And luckily I've at least kept some of those. This is something that's been done on the commissioners' side for years as far as I'm concerned, so I, I appreciate going forward. But I want to be careful molding over and getting too much into the day-to-day operations of each individual department myself. And then the other part of it is just the procedural part of the operations of those departments. You know, they, they have, a lot of them have to have the flexibility, their job descriptions, sort of sense of tone of what their duties are. And so job descriptions can be updated possibly through H R and everything like that. So for our first blush and you bringing it forward, I think it's great, but I, I'm sort of leaning towards an actual staff meeting where we said, we talked about it, maybe, maybe we need to make a subcommittee, I don't know, I hate just making committees, but maybe that's what we need to do.
Do you get, do you, go ahead, Sher.
You know, I'd like to stress this point here. There's no sense in having policies and procedures if they're not enforceable to everybody in the county. And I'm talking about elected officials to the brand-new hire. If, if one person can deviate from that policy, that procedure and the others can't, you might as well not even do that. They have to be applicable and enforceable.
And it's one of the reasons I want them in there because we, we're, we're just saying we're taking somebody's word for it, but it's against policy. Well, how do I know if it's against policy or not on any given subject? If we don't have somewhere where it's wrote down and I could read it and say, this is against county policy. And, but I wanted you guys to be able to be part of that creating of this policy, all the elected officials, all the department heads, so we can kick this off, kick it over on each other and, and discuss it and give ourselves a year's time to create something that we're all satisfied with. But you can't enforce a policy if you don't even know it's there or not, you know?
Well, I, I appreciate what you're saying, Sheriff, very much because we do have written policies that they're not enforced right now. I mean, we're lacking in a lot of policies, but over the years, we have policies, there's some I T policies that we don't enforce, there's some other policies that we don't enforce. They're only, your point is they're, they're only as good as the enforcement of the policies. And that's where the Board of Commissioners and the department has elected officials and staff all have to be on the same page and, and that goes right on down to the line employees and they're held to those policies. Appreciate you bringing it forward.
Right. And not only are they enforceable to your, your staff person, but they have to be enforceable to all elected officials. I mean, it doesn't do anybody any good if I hold my deputies accountable for a policy and then I violate that policy myself and say, well, I'm an elected official, I can, I can violate that. No, you cannot. If it's enforceable to, my deputy is enforceable to me. And I have to, to monitor myself. And if we don't do that, then we might as well not even have.
Right. I agree with you a hundred percent.
So where would you like to go with this? You want to do it individually, on a staff meeting?
I'd like to do a staff meeting. What do you guys think?
I think that we need to sit in some sort of staff meeting to discuss the ins and the outs of this because in my personal concern of setting too many policies for what I would specifically do in my job, I will then limit whoever may replace me because you take away uniqueness of management and the ability to change things when you set too many policies.
I, I agree with you.
So if we're talking about policies that have to do with human resource, we have a handbook. If we're talking about policies that, that we're going to buy things, we have statutes to follow. But specifically for me to go back to my desk and write down policies on who would fill my shoes, that I don't, I don't see, there has to be some kind of disconnect between the uniqueness of that job, my jobs versus Jake's or Dave's or Jay's versus the policies that we have to follow.
Even, even the commissioners. I'm, I'm going to throw something out there as an example. So, and I'm not beating anybody up, this has to do with the commissioners. I've been thinking, you know, in a tight financial year and we have to travel, right? We have to travel to Salem, we have to do maybe Washington D.C. We have things where we need to go sometimes for legislation and those sort of things. But what if we have a commissioner that doesn't report back on anything when he travels or she travels? I don't want to limit where a commissioner can go and do work, but I also, if it's putting the county in a financial strain or we're not getting any information back from those places that he or she may go, what's the benefit of them traveling? I don't want to limit travel, but I, I think there's got to be something there, and I haven't thought it completely through, where at the, do you see guys where I'm coming from? I don't want to limit the commissioners or elected officials, but on the other hand, there's got to be some kind of deal to rein in somebody that's going wrong. And I don't know exactly how to do that yet, but I'm just using that as an example. I don't want to, I'm, I'm a hundred percent with you, Kevin, as far as, I don't, I don't want to rule us out of doing a great job, but I also think we have to have a foundation of where we can all go, that we want to find a policy or a procedure on how we should do things. It's, it's not like we're making the Ten Commandments. That's not what I'm trying to create. What I'm trying to create is a structure, a base of where we can go.
More like guidelines?
Yeah, a guideline where we can, we can know where we're going. Can we change those at any time? Yes. I don't want it written in stone where we lose our entrepreneurial type thinking or, do you see what I'm saying? do you see what I'm saying? And so, that's why I wanna have you guys all involved, because I don't want it so structured that we became, we, we become a schoolmaster, you know, where you're standing over and saying you're not doing this, but I, I want them, want us all to have a guideline where we're focused on the same goals and, and that sort of thing, and so.
I, I think too, Commissioner, we need to look at what, what is practice versus what is policy, what is policy. The sheriff may or may not have a policy on citations, on how they issue citations and what they issue citations for, some of that's in statute, based, based on statute. In community corrections, we have the ability to cite someone in the court. I, I can't have a policy based on citations and issuing a citation to appear in court because we may cite based on health reasons, we may cite based on jail, jail capacity. We may cite because that's the direction we're getting from the board of the district attorney or just because employment, I mean, there's a lot of factors to take into place. So we have a practice that we have in place, and I would hate to put that in writing and be bound to that, because that's gonna be an ever-changing, that's gonna be an ever-changing world right there. So I think, I think having a meeting and taking a step back and having conversations about this.
I'm all in for it.
Because policies and procedures are one thing, practices are a, a completely different thing. And if we're gonna, if we need to put every single thing in writing, we're gonna, we're not gonna have them.
No, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that. That's not the vision I have for this. I just want to build a base so we have, because speaking, I was speaking for James.
I don't disagree with where you want, I think what we need to do is make a list of, start, start making a list and generating a list of what should be in policy versus what, what should stay in practices, because practices change all the time.
Sherri, are there any other comments?
Are you asking for a policy with a control measure in it? Is that what you're looking for, the way you're describing it? So we're building a policy with a control measure to that policy?
Well.
I don't know, Sherri.
When, when I look around the room here, Brad and I have been here the longest and I think every single time we have new staff come on, new managers, new elected officials, this is an issue. I think what we're looking for is how do we do business?
Yeah, that's.
Then it's how do we get what we do collectively done? And so, I think when we're talking about individual departments and what they do, I don't know that we wanna go there, we just wanna say, how do we operate as managers and get business done? It's kind of a help to.
And, and I, I agree with you that maybe we don't need to go so in-depth with each department, but on the other hand, it would make things a lot easier if somebody comes on board and says, has a book and says, this is generally how we do business.
So I kinda ask.
I just as a department head don't want someone going, yeah, but it says right here. Cause I'm thinking it should be my decision, and if that decision doesn't affect, I mean, if it benefits the county, isn't that what we're, is this what you're trying to get, right?
I think on the department level, when you're deciding what kind of policies do we need, it should, it's up to the department head. So what is going to be useful for my employees? And what's gonna help them know how to, you know, what to do in certain situations?
I would rather have you come down and ask that, you know, ask that question. And then we'll just go, we'll go, I mean, I have a problem with, you know, in twenty minutes, I can.
Okay, Kevin, Kevin will have the next question, then we'll get to you. I think, I think amongst all of us department heads, there's some confusion as to specifically what you want. So a staff meeting where you can ask us direct questions and we can answer you on our processes.
Great.
Yeah, will probably help you clear up maybe some of this.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if I'm overstepping here, but in, in my position, for instance, I know that things have been decided in the, in a meeting format like this that are policy, and I know what you're saying, they just disappear in the clerk's office, but they, and it could be as simple as a change in, um, I can't remember even the last thing that happened, but it was an actual, we made a decision and maybe somebody that was here in the meeting knew about it, um, or it was maybe pushed out to the department heads, but they didn't catch that email or, um, they didn't let their staff know. And no one knew about it, but then it pops up and it's like, yeah, that was changed like last year or two years ago, and it could be something that was changed even to the handbook itself, but nobody knew about it.
Well, I, I apologize that I'm not coming clear with what I want. I don't, for one, I don't wanna micromanage it, any of the department heads or other elected officials, I wanna totally drive the mountain light. I just wanna have some kind of structure where guys like when James and I come in, you're not getting blindsided by this is policy, this is whatever, and where is it? You know, there's, there's nothing for me to base anything off of unless I read through twenty years of minutes. It's what it boils down to. And I want you guys to have the right to run your department's house if it, I don't wanna butt into that. But on the other hand, I gotta know where we're headed and it's my responsibility for the county to have some kind of guidelines where we're all working in the same direction. Do you see what I'm saying?
Even if the hours of work are routinely changed, like, well, our office, for instance, I'm here for, you know, nine and a half to ten hours a day, but I'm not here on Friday. Jake's office has a structure similar, he has staff that work, because it helps them cover all the days and not work as much overtime by fluctuating as staff on different days. That's more, I think, you need to know if someone comes and says, well, so-and-so gets Friday off and I wanna too, that's an internal structure of the department, are they a public department?
Have to talk that over with their department heads.
Yeah.
We shouldn't be talking to them about that.
That's where I made my first surprise.
That's the department heads' business, you know? And I don't have any right to say you should work this, these hours or not. And I don't plan on that. If Dave or Jake wants to set up their own hours of work, go for it.
They, they have to follow several different rules on that. The one thing as Board of Commissioners, our policy, whether it's written or not, is the courthouse to be open eight-thirty to five, five days a week. And that, that's an example of the policy within the department, how they have their office there. So we're public servants, so their office is open at eight-thirty-five.
Yeah, but I mean.
Be one of them, but.
Let's, let's just use that one for example.
That's one of the ones that needs to be clarified.
Right.
Of what, what is the county operations and everything? Is, you know, years and years ago, way before my time, the policy through contract was set that the county works thirty-seven and a half hours. But as our department heads, they're expected to work four. There's a lot of things, a lot of cleanup that can be done that's, uh, that's perceived the way it's supposed to be. Going back to what's happened today, myself, I've been here a long time, I still find ordinances that were approved in the eighties or the nineties, I have to go research them. We have ordinances that we don't even enforce. So I, I support getting, so we're able to get our hands on that stuff and read it a little bit more simple. Yet there's several different, when we start talking policies, as the Board of Commissioners, our elected leaders, the administrative, the whole thing, is setting law, local ordinances and setting overall policies for the operations of the county. And then you break it on down into the, the departments and the internal policies that they have and everything. I think that, that as we work forward on this, is how, how do we mold that over that it's easier and accessible for anybody?
That's, that's all I'm trying to do is make it easy. I don't want it to be, uh, you know, something that's gonna be a burden. I'm not trying to create a burden, I'm trying to do just the opposite, and so.
Welcome to that government.
But I'm not, I want your guys' hope, I'm not trying to be the dictator. I, I want your guys' input on all of it, and then we can build a policy book that's simple. And all of us can be a part of it, so.
Well, that's what I'm, that's, I guess that's what I'm asking you. If you wanna answer to your question, you know, just write the questions down, boy, it's a fucking, I don't know.
I think build policy off that.
Well, just like, just like the one that Brad just brought up, the courthouse is to be open from eight-thirty to five? Or is that?
Yeah, I mean, if, if all three of us are driving in a car and we get into an accident and we're dead, um, you're gonna have to go find retired commissioners to find out what some of these previous rules are or they're gonna have to lean on the department heads for most of this information. Um, or it's gonna take a lot of digging.
Actually, there's layout.
There, there is some layout, but I mean, it's, it's something that we would just appreciate a little bit of clarity, because, you know, twenty years of minutes and a hundred years of statutes is a lot to go over. Personally, from my point of view, I've only been here about a month and I think that the department heads aren't doing a fantastic job. I, I can't think of one single thing, all you guys have just done an absolutely splendid job. You have, uh, great loyalty within your departments and a lot of people really appreciate the work that you guys all do. And, uh, I, I think that if I'm, if I'm reading this right, I, I would also suggest a, a staff meeting of sorts where a lot of us can sit down and we can talk about things that are running short on time and the sheriff is scheduled to talk about twenty-five minutes. But, um, I think a staff meeting would be great to kinda talk a little bit more about this and Mark could iron out a little bit more where he wants to go with it.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, so.
Be sure, and I, Jay may have avenues for even trainings for us to be able to bring to a staff meeting on some of this stuff. Don't know what there is out there, Jay, but generally you have a pretty good avenue to look for things that way. And, and we probably should bring legal counsel more into this discussion, or he's not here today.
That's fine.
Other questions to Commissioner Albersen?
Please, my question.
All right, so, um, we're running behind eleven-thirty. Sheriff Taylor, you wanted some time for the board.
Speaking of policies. I'm here, commissioners, to ask for consideration on the exception to, um, our vehicle use policy, which, um, traditionally the purchases of vehicles, um, have been white. I have checked, uh, the fleet management policy. And on page four, um, the procurement of vehicles, there's no policy as far as colors of vehicles. On page five, vehicle purchases, there's no policy as far as color of vehicles. On page seven, minimum use criteria, law enforcement exemptions. We are exempt for the minimum, um, number of miles per month and the minimum miles per year. I would simply ask that we make an exception, um, for the color of vehicles that the sheriff's office is purchasing for a number of reasons. Number one, um, traditionally this is what the trend of law enforcement is going to right now for two reasons, the element of surprise and for the safety of the deputies. Today, we've had fourteen law enforcement officers killed nationally. Now, I'm not attributing any color of vehicles to that, but the trend is law enforcement is dying at a higher rate than, than what we have seen in the past. Uh, many are ambushing and ambushes, uh, in this little county, uh, population-wise. Uh, it's a big county, um, everybody knows what color vehicles, what kind of vehicles we're driving. I think this gives an edge to the deputies if we can mix it up every couple of years as to the color of vehicles that we are purchasing. The biggest vendor of vehicles being purchased in the state of Oregon is Oregon State Police. They do not have any white-colored vehicles, traditionally they're the blue, they're going to silver. Uh, you'll see, uh, fire departments traditionally that are, have red fire engines going to lime green, simply because they're visually easier to see when they're going through red lights and such. So I'm, I'm asking, um, for consideration to, uh, purchase our law enforcement vehicles uh, different than, than the color that we have been doing here in the past. There would be, there, every time new vehicles are, are coming out on the market, there's a number of different colors that are available. We are not gonna go wild and get the multicolored vehicles. They're gonna be a, a standard color that have absolutely zero cost, um, to the purchase of the vehicle. There's four or five of them right now, um, that are, um, black, silver, charcoal, gray. There's red, which we won't buy. They, they will be a moderate color, um, that will blend in with your, your everyday um, vehicles that are on the street. About eighteen months ago, I proposed this to the Board of Commissioners and there was consensus that, uh, go ahead and do this, and that's why we purchased, uh, a gold vehicle, a silver vehicle. Uh, we did get the gold one, there was a mix-up in the color and, and, uh, the truck that came that was not silver was white. We have two new vehicles that are ready to be purchased, um, and I would like the commissioners' approval and the exception of vehicle color, so we can get a different color of vehicles for this purchase. I think we have an obligation, I think we have a responsibility to do what we can do to maintain the safety of our deputies that are out there in the field. And I think this is a small part that will help through that.
So your consideration. Yeah, we can take that into consideration. I don't remember coming before the board for the changes of color for those two vehicles. Uh, apologize for that. I, I think maybe an individual commissioner was talking about that, but I don't know if it was brought to the board. History is a sheriff right on back and this is one of those, if the policy is written there, as you, you mentioned. Also, there's no written policy on, decals will go on the sheriff's rig and everything. You were very much on board on efficiencies on that part of it when you came on, and that's on the color of white was the, the basis of why the commissioners over the years through consensus, uh, went with white. Times have changed, um, back in the time we was purchasing quite few from the state pool and, uh, the appearance to the public that we serve, white was very acceptable. Government wasn't looking flashy and over the top. Uh, that was the consensus of the board before this board here. So that's, that's one reason why we went with white. The state pool, we had better prices at that time because of the bottom of the whole big fleet. You're saying that there's no added cost to change colors? That's great that that's the case out there. I know in my personal life that the color wasn't added on the cost of the vehicle I bought. I guess I'm curious, whenever you talked about changing up the colors for the, the public to not see you or to be undercover, they all still have E-plates, which is picked, I picked those up from a long ways out. In corrections, a lot of times we don't have E-plates. Just curious if you're looking at changing so you don't have E-plates if you're concerned about being picked out by the public. The other side of that is, is, um, law enforcement nationally is looked down upon so much now that it really bothers me. And I'd like to see the day, whenever, um, the public, and I'm not talking about your department or you, that our kids want to be police officers again, that they wanna be part of it and everything. So I understand one part of it, there's a certain segment of your, your job, uh, and your deputies' jobs that you need to be not as, uh, visual to the public. But there's another part that a lot of people should take pride in seeing that we are law enforcement and that we are actors. I see both sides of it, I guess.
I would like to address two things that you said, Commissioner Miners, but, um, the first thing is, I, I did bring this forward to the Board of Commissioners, I did not talk to any one specific commissioner regarding this. And the second thing is, say added cost, I would have not told the Board of Commissioners or was not added cost if that was not in fact the case.
Mark? Do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Um, I, I would ask this, that these vehicles are pending being purchased, so an expeditious decision by the Board of Commissioners would certainly be appreciated. so an expeditious decision by the Board of Commissioners would certainly be appreciated.
I think we'll make a decision on it tomorrow.
Well, let's back up to that. There has been a decision made by quotes that went out and those were quoted at a certain color. We can't change that without, I'm not sure, I'd have to talk to legal counsel, but if things have been, we've made a decision as a board to purchase by purchasing policy and procedures. I'm not sure if we can change what was written and, and do that. Where there's no added cost, maybe so. But we'd like to run that by legal counsel to make sure that we're within our policy and our purchase policy. So, there's that, that part of it there.
I talked to Kip Phillips, Lithium Motors, he said it would not add any cost, all it would change is the color of the vehicle. So, if there's a concern about added costs. He has agreed to delay the purchase for a short period of time because the vehicles that were ordered were not what we were looking at. We were looking at the police package. Right now, Under Sheriff Paul was communicating with him as to the cost difference. That cost difference, if any, will be brought back to the Board of Commissioners, run through fleet or Board of Commissioners if there's any added costs or deleted costs. Right now, what we understand is there will not be any added cost to the purchase of these vehicles.
Okay, so, we're sort of going through this right now on the vehicle and correction site right now. Is if there, if, if things change and there's a difference in cost, we have to go back out and get the quotes by our purchase rules. That's according to our legal counsel. So, part of this is, Sheriff, the vehicle committee met on these vehicles and has presented very much, we changed the direction, the vehicle committee changed the direction. Paul was agreeing and it wasn't even handed us, but it's brought to the Board of Commissioners to go through the process, goes through the vehicle committee. They make recommendations to Board of Commissioners and then we can accept it or not. And the initial, the vehicle committee approved two vehicles, one in the sheriff's, one in the juvenile. It was requested for us to reconsider that, and we did, we reconsidered that. Budget numbers and everything, the way it's presented by Under Sheriff Paul was if we sold two trailers, these two vehicles, we'd be able to come in within budget and also on top of that, that outfitting would come out and put a mountaintop, some money, some money. So, through that process, and as our fleet manager brought it forward, she brought it forward in that these two vehicles would come in at this price and we'd be able to stay within budget. Well known that this budget year that we're gonna be quite short. And if we completely defeat that budget, that we're gonna lose our program to get the vehicles in the future years. And we have a pretty good program now on rotation and everything. So, that's one reason why the cost was kept down. And that's the process, and I don't think he was able to make everyone those meetings, but through the process, we did change midway because we seen the need for the sheriff to have two vehicles presented very well. They're not the more costly ones, no, but they're the same as what we've been using for quite a few years. So, that, that, that's the way that the process, just to sort of overlay it for the two new commissioners, that's, that's the way it happened and, and you know, the vehicle committee strove if we made that recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
All I'm asking for, commissioners, is consideration in the change of color.
Gotcha.
No additional cost.
I did have a couple of questions as far as if, if it does turn out, the vehicles, like you say, if they weren't what you originally were asking for, as far as you were looking for the police package and if a vehicle came and it wasn't part of the police package, if we do have to put out for an additional, for a new quote.
We will not do that.
If you did, question being, I'm curious to see the difference. Even if the police package did cost more, I'm curious what the cost difference is compared to, if you gotta get the regular vehicle, you have to drill more holes into it, you have to send it away to get the, all the additional supports and everything, the new wiring and everything put into place. What is that price compared to getting the police package that has all those things in it already? If it happened to cost more to get the police package? So, if it did come back and that cost more and you had to go back out for future quotes, I'm curious what that price difference is and maybe if the county did save more in the end by getting the police package, that might be something to consider. It's just a question I, I thought.
And, and don't forget about your fleet manager because she worked, she worked with Under Sheriff Paul and.
She just stepped out. There was a question I was going to pose.
She's one that presented as a fleet manager brought it forward, she has those numbers, it'd be pretty easy to get to.
Not to interrupt, but I'm gonna have to, I have to go till the, we're gonna reconvene after lunch, until one o'clock.
We haven't decided yet, we haven't got, got to break.
I'm definitely going to take this under consideration. I don't, personally, I mean, we can't make any decisions as board, obviously, at the moment. I think, two things. I completely understand where you're coming from as far as having that, that different color available, that option of having a few different colors that, if we wanna make it a county policy to have white vehicles for our fleet, I think that's a great idea. But I think that there, we could also do an exception possibly for law enforcement vehicles. That way, other departments and the rest of the fleet is not affected necessarily and we wouldn't have a ton of different colors. Because the sheriff's vehicle, in my mind, this is just the way I perceive it, the sheriff's vehicles are not necessarily, they don't have the same status as the fleet vehicles. You can't, I can't go get the keys to a sheriff's vehicle and go take it down the road if I wanna go out to Burns for county time as a county vehicle. I can't go drive a law enforcement vehicle. So, I feel like it's already set apart a little bit from the rest of the county vehicles. So, as far as an exception for law enforcement vehicles to be a little bit different in color for certain purposes, I don't necessarily see a big problem with that, that's just where we stand. But I will be, I'm going to take this under a lot of consideration and I, I think it's definitely something to think about for tomorrow and.
Well, my personal opinion is, if it doesn't cause the county any extra money, the sheriff should be able to use whatever color he wants. That's my personal opinion.
You know, as, as long as I've been here, and Melanie, you could probably correct me if I'm mistaken here, is when we are done with a vehicle, we don't, we haven't in the last four years given that vehicle to another department. We auction them off, usually they go to another law enforcement agency or something like that. So, traditionally, it doesn't go to another department to use. And so, you're not gonna see multi-colored vehicles throughout the county because the sheriff's office is done using these vehicles. They're usually like I said, because they have those special wiring harnesses, they have all the spotlights and that. We just take what we need out of the, the market.
Actually, it depends on the condition of the vehicle. We've had the cascade, we've used them, lots of cascade effect over the years where we were purchasing and rotating them out and we weren't putting them on them through departments. The two that's gotten out right away in this year, one's going to the maintenance and one's going to the assessor's. The assessor's office, as we've talked through our vehicle committee, really doesn't like to go out there and brand new rigs. So, there's been a cascade theory and a cascade effect over the years that we've done that. It's changed quite a bit, Sheriff, I agree with you, because of the cost of outfitting and the cost of sheriff's vehicles. We need to get as many miles out of them as we can now because it's, it costs thirty thousand dollars to outfit them on top of the cost of it. So, the cascade thing doesn't fit as much so. Long story short, that's the direction that we're really actually happening to go, dictated by cost almost. So, we probably won't see as many of them cascading into other county departments. Anyway, your consideration is certainly appreciated.
Thank you.
Alright, so, we have a lot left to do, but Kevin's been very patient.
Yes.
At the minimum, we need to get Kevin back on the road.
I'm gonna hurry quick.
Thank you, Mark.
Get out there now. I'm not sure what we're, we have.
What we have is, you wanna do, I got the Vanway as the very first thing.
Okay, we can talk about the Vanway then.
This is just for update.
This is for informational purposes only, but this piece of equipment I personally witnessed and would be a great asset to our long-term plans. I'm assuming you have from Vanway is a PowerPoint presentation printed on paper, so you can read through that as your leisure. I guess what I wanted to give you was just a little narrative of.
This one right here?
Yes. But also, there's another one, Aiden, twice, and pictures and so forth. So, this machine, similar to the road department's plans to invest in asset management for oil and chipping, we also have to look at long-term plans for aggregate-based roads, gravel roads and dirt roads for that matter. Several mileage that are listed, three hundred fifty plus miles are broken down into dirt and the majority, eighty percent, plus or minus, is into gravel. The cost of gravel, which will be the next item on the list, is not going down and is only going to increase. So, this machine, when I requested a quote from them, it was back in July when I went and watched them demonstrate, this machine was upwards of four hundred fifty to four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. That's fitted with the first year's worth of hammer tools. So, all the tools needed to crush for the amount of time, hours, man-hours and so forth you're planning on putting on this machine. So, if you break that into ten years and you say you're gonna invest forty-five thousand dollars per year in gravel, you're not gonna overlay many gravel roads. But with this machine, we could complete between twenty-four to twenty-eight miles of gravel road by reconditioning the ditch line, which is necessary in all areas, utilize the material that we've already bought and passed and then reapply it to the road surface and improve it. Without rock crushing in a pit, without the cost of hauling it, all the way in to tear up the trucks and so forth, this process, this machine allows us to do all that right on-site, in-line, right in-line. So, a gentleman that I've come to work with very well in Umatilla County, county boss there, he has one of these machines and I'm gonna go visit their operation and try to see what their troubles and trials are. But the, the discussion that we had the other day was that it works exactly like he thought it would and similar to the plans that I would like to put in place for this machine, they've already started that process because everybody understands when you're in this business that the cost of aggregate purchases becoming more and more unaffordable by the minute. You have any questions specifically on this machine?
I don't, you, you brought this a few months back, I've watched the video. It's a way of efficiency for the long run. You're looking at doing, putting this into this next year's budget, informing us ahead of time so that you can try and figure out your budget. As you heard earlier, the transfer probably isn't gonna happen this year. So, that pretty much means the same next year. So, that, that definitely will have an impact on how you build your budget, Kevin. The long-term, I'm very supportive of this, absolutely, because efficiencies and the, the cost to the county go down. To make big rocks and little rocks is expensive now. And we have four hundred, about fifty miles, four hundred twenty miles of gravel road out there. Takes a lot of maintenance. I like the direction you're looking.
I think a great, great tool that we can utilize, so, yeah.
Now, we're into the rock purchase.
Okay, so, in the long-term plan of surface treatment, we have material needed all over the county. In this particular case, Carl Shumway has invited a rock crusher into his pit to crush for himself and others and we would like to add on to that material list. These materials specific for our quality, the specific location, price and the quality control. That pit, I have tested the material and it beats our specification for durability and abrasion. This pit's located right off Christmas Valley Highway, which is specifically where the work in fiscal year twenty, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two is located and is where it's gonna be. And we will not have storage costs or transport, additional transport costs. A lot of times when we have a rock crushing contract, there's limited space at the pit and we have additional costs in hauling it out of there while they're making it. In this case, we will not have that cost, so, cost savings for doing this as well. Fiscal impact is three hundred, three thousand nine hundred dollars. Purchases twelve thousand ton of three-quarters, a quarter spec chip rock and fifty-two hundred tons of one-inch minus aggregate.
I apologize, I don't have it in front of me. Your thing here, this is for action tomorrow and I'm, I guess what I was gonna say, looking for here.
Do you have it or you want this one?
It has, no, I'm, it has the exception, the what exception, we can go ahead.
It has the technical number nine and I reviewed it with our, with our legal counsel.
Legal counsel will not be here in person tomorrow unless things have changed, so we'll have him by phone if needed tomorrow, is that correct, Melanie?
He hasn't.
Pardon me?
He hasn't told you yet?
Okay, so, but, but all, you've reviewed it all, legal counsel tomorrow?
Yeah, I reviewed, I reviewed this process and the reasons for it and with legal counsel over the course of a few days and so. He's, he's seen the same agenda as you have. And understands the need that we have when there's, when somebody else has moved their rock crusher into a pit, whether we have needs immediately or hurting in the future, we need to take advantage of that when we can. Significant cost savings from being able to add on.
Okay, so, any other questions towards that?
Yeah, it says the DiAtley and Shumway pit.
Well, it's Shumway's pit, DiAtley is the rock crusher that he hired to come in and make material for.
And then, we talked earlier about Harold Miles's pit, or are you gonna pull anything?
Well, that's a, that's a separate, that's a separate issue and just like, just like we recognize the need, Harold may as well. There are future needs in that area too and so we'll see how that, how that works out.
Okay.
If there's any other questions, the reason I ask that is I, I won't be able to attend tomorrow unless I can, unless I can call in.
I, I myself don't see no need for, for that, I mean, it's all right now.
I didn't know, you're getting specifics about.
I think it's pretty straightforward, yeah.
I tried to lay out on the agenda the specifics this whole time.
And you, you know what you're, sorry, you know what you're looking for as far as the type of rock. I, I know when we visited, we kinda looked at a little, some of the aerial photos, I don't know how old those photos were. We could kinda see they were into some of the sender and everything there in the one pit that, that Shumway's. But I, I, you know what kind of rock you're looking for. I know Harold has pretty hard rock in his pit. And I think it's a good move to capitalize on this stuff. Like we said in our meeting, that even if you store this stuff, the fact that we can store it for free in Shumway's pit is great. And the fact is, is it's not going anywhere. It can rain, snow on it, whatever, it's staying there. Once we get that rock crushed and the county owns it, it's there. So, and, and we know we'll end up using it at some point, so.
Yeah, this is, this is, well, this is a unique situation because the planned work that we have in the future is within hauling distance from this pit. So, we have no additional cost to transfer anything.
Absolutely.
And that is.
Less time you have to handle it, the cost effectiveness is.
Lot of man-hours, a lot of wear and tear and a lot to deal with.
Absolutely, and I, and legal counsel reviewed it, they seem to be very happy with it, so I think it's a great opportunity and, so, yeah.
Okay, so next item is the addition of the Kenworth dump truck purchase.
So the addition of purchase, I should say, the condition of our purchase upon inspection is nineteen ninety-nine Kenworth D eight hundred. This, this truck specifically is pre-emission, which is what we're looking for, it's low mileage, a hundred and forty thousand. Don't, don't concern, I shouldn't say don't concern yourself, but don't be alarmed by nineteen ninety-nine. We're, we're looking at specific mileages. This, this truck has a thirty-four oh six cat engine in it, several of our trucks have thirty-four oh sixes. The Lowboy and the other, last two tractors out of purchase. The, the years on these trucks in comparison to new, in this case, some of these models that are just pre-emission are, in my opinion, better, better trucks. And for the cost versus what, what these trucks would be new is, is worth it for sure. This truck needs the specs that we're looking for, the rears, the transmission that we like. A lot of times when you look at these trucks, if they've been converted from an over-the-road truck to a dump truck, they might have fifteen or eighteen speeds in, which is really not what we want. Ten, ten or thirteen speed works really well for what we're doing, and the gear ratios of this truck meet our needs, so.
I'm very good with it, I just like, I've talked to you individually, like you've talked to every commissioner, but to your employees and everybody that works on looking at these used vehicles and keep us operating, thank you. I know when you bring it forward, it's been researched, it's been looked at all the way through, and naturally, the first thing I looked at was that year and then looked at the mileage, and then when you tell me what engine it has and everything, this would be a good purchase for me.
There's, there's three other trucks that were, that the county's had for a pretty substantial amount of time to have these same, same exact specs. This is something that we've found to be historically successful.
Any other questions?
Question, I think it's perfect.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for putting me in.
It looks like we might muscle right on through because we have other people that think that. Mark, you want to just muscle right on through?
Yeah, absolutely, if no one's got a bathroom work or anything, that's fine with me.
All right, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah?
I'm sending Jake a message just to come back.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, I've got three things I'd like to talk about. I'm going to start with the planning commission recommendation you should have before you. Positions two and five that expire, and well, one of which has expired, the other one is a vacancy that needs to be filled. So we have two applicants, West Davies, who's currently been served on the planning commission and would like to continue on the board, and the planning commission is very happy with the work that he's doing. And then we've advertised for a number of months now for the, one of the two positions that, that are in our bylaws for Northlake and, you know, in the, in the papers in Northlake and then also the examiner, and then it's been on the county website. With little success getting people's interest, although I've spoken to many people up there trying to encourage them to apply if they'd like to hear, have a voice on the planning commission. But we did get Travis Way and a recommendation from the planning commission to appoint him to the planning commission. Travis works for the city of Paisley and looks like an excellent candidate. I haven't met him face-to-face, but I've talked to him on the phone, pretty excited to have him on the planning commission. So to keep it short, that's, you know, the recommendation is to appoint both of those two gentlemen. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I have none read it. I was encouraged a number of years, the family goes back, don't know the person, but glad somebody's willing to step up.
So one thing I did want to point out, our planning commission is a seven-member board for the new commissioners and it is geographically by statute required that we get different areas in the county. So in the adopted bylaws from a few years back, we amended it to, to be specific in that we would like, we're, we're trying to approve two from Northlake, two from the central area, and then three from the south end, which also includes the Pusheen Adele in front of our gears. We had good representation with family ties to that area as well. So we have seven, or six currently on the board, and with these two appointments to these positions, we'll be back to full.
Very good. Next is your land sale policy.
So land sale policy is, little, you know, background, we, when I took over about four or five years ago, the land sale.
Bless you.
We would, we would hold the auction in June is what prior management was doing for foreclosure properties. And as my time on here and a lot of the discussion has wrapped around, by the time we sell the properties and get the checks cashed, we're right up against the deadline for getting these properties back on the tax rolls. July first is that cutoff date that the deeds have to be signed and recorded, or we've lost out a whole other year of taxes. So knowing that and within my schedule as manager of the land sale, I penned you with a proposal to change it from the first Monday in June to the first Monday in May, which would give us a whole other month to, to get these prepared and recorded and get the interest of people, which usually happens in that, you know, month period, and so we get to record it. This should be a huge win to get, you know, this is a simple fix and also.
It should make us more efficient on getting the payments through at the end of the year.
Exactly, yes, so a simple thing, and then, then for some reason, we were starting at eight-thirty in the morning on the follow-up sales, which we started at six percent of the real market value at the auction and at the let sale a week later, we dropped the percent down to forty percent of the real market value. This is to spark more interest because historically, you know, at six percent, a lot of the people who have purchased these properties in the past don't want to spend that much, they want to get it and then turn around and flip it. And so at forty percent, we've, we've seen a lot more interest. About two years ago, we switched the policy, maybe three years ago, so to also add, after one full year at forty percent, we, we also have a policy change, or the price changed down to twenty-five percent of the real market value, which we've seen a whole lot more. If you look at our current available properties on the website, there's only, you know, a handful of properties left and we're really turning these over quickly and, you know, goes to, and just the amount of work and time we put into knowing these properties. Karen Smith does a great job researching and getting all the paperwork behind these and, you know, off and on the lot and take pictures when I'm on the other site visits and, I mean, we're, we're getting these back on the rolls, which is important.
And you, you checked, legal counsel were able to check, review this policy?
Legal's good with this, and I do have.
Appreciate you doing that.
Simple track changes on this. The only last thing with the policy that's changed, which we've already started implementing, but as a policy that should came to you before on this, but when the clerk's office made the change because of state statute, adding a forty-dollar fee to the recording fees, we've had to switch the administrative recording fee that we charge at purchase or at sale of these properties from a hundred and forty-five to a hundred and eighty-five. And that also recovers our cost that the assessors and crews when they do the time report.
So any questions on that?
Nope.
Next item is the order of sale.
Yep, so every, you know, September, October, usually is when, when the assessor's office handles the actual proceedings through the courts to get these properties that are being foreclosed on through the judgment process and then they're due to the county. Usually then the next month or two, I'm looking at these properties and then I'll come before you about this time each year and give you the order, which is done by signature and then recorded clerk's office to sell a number of the properties that we've got. We had fifty-two properties that were foreclosed on last year due to taxes and then unrecommended for being kept back from the sale, which is, is definitely practice, it wasn't written in the ball somewhere, but a practice that those that are in sage grouse habitat, when it was the last ten years roughly, sage grouse has been a hot topic item for trying to get listed as a native species, which wasn't, but then we're still kind of working with our partners, the, the, you know, Swiss Marla to try to help protect these areas. So these are three properties that's really, you know, there's no development around them and knowing that these land sales usually go to people who are flipping them and trying to get people to purchase them to put home or recreate or something, it's, it's something that we've held back on. And then hopefully down the road, we'll look at a big chunk of these and see what we can do with them on a greater level. Now the taxes on these, certainly nothing to, you know, fuss about too much. And it's very, very minimal for what we'll lose by not getting back on the tax rolls.
Well, and the argument of the way that Lake County manages towards protection of the sage grouse, this is quite an argument politically and on paper that shows that we're protecting core habitat. Doesn't mean that we won't sell those if somebody comes in and just adjoins their, their property in this cattle production or something. We still can sell them just by holding off the sale.
Yeah, there should be a separate process and, you know, we can do private sales on the property's value at a certain level. And then if we had to, we could do the four required notices in the paper with just that simple. I mean, when we notice, which would now, if we change the policy, be in April, be four consecutive weeks prior to the hearing, or prior to the auction, and then, so the public's aware of which properties are being sold, you know. Yeah, like Commissioner said, if there are specific ones that are joining ranchers or whomever needs, or even if we've got into making, you know, exchanges with, with some of the other federal and state agencies, then, then we could advertise as such. Pretty simple, orders in writing, no suggestions. The other, those three were the sage grouse and the fork that I haven't talked about yet, it's against the rail. It's a simple, small O V L lot, which is a platted lot, twenty-five by a hundred and thirty-five foot lot.
We talked about it, yeah.
And you guys have the Google Earth on that, if we wanted to, we could get that, but it's really, if you're going to have to look at. We'll publish this on the website as soon as we get your approval on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Let's see Jake back.
All right, so Melanie, for down to you, we have the policy that was tabled last time.
Actually, it's James's letter.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I already marked that, yes. If you want to give us an update on draft letter response to Senate five oh one and two seventy-five.
Sure.
Thank you, Mark.
I skipped over to, I made some changes, I'll put this on. Made some changes to the letter last night and I'll share with both you and Mark. This is the copy right here. So.
James, do you want to?
I'll, I'll update you on the bills themselves a little bit before I.
You want to tell them why we're doing this?
Yes, yeah. So I've had a number of people in my office asking about several Senate bills and some of the House bills that are coming down pertaining to the second amendment, and this legislation looking at new ways to restrict the second amendment. And so in the hallway, we kind of, without trying, trying to keep it from going into a quorum in a public meeting where the public wasn't present, I just volunteered, hey, look, I'll, I'll draft the letter really quick and we'll bring it before the public so everyone can kind of hear where we're at. And we can talk about it, and if we want to change anything, we can do that. The bill's in question, the Senate Bill five oh one, which is kind of presented as a measure for mandatory permits for anyone owning a firearm. And it, but in it, it is eleven pages of wording that is just absolutely outlandish. Everything from a twenty-round limit for purchasing within a thirty-day period and to a five-round limit on any magazine that the public court owns. So I don't know what their plan is to do with revolvers, but five-round limit, and if you have a magazine that has more than five rounds, and if you haven't gotten rid of anything that has more than that, within a hundred and eighty days, you're subject to up to three hundred and sixty-four days in prison and over six thousand dollar fine or both on the first offense. So there's, there's just, that's just a little taste of what is in Senate Bill five oh one. It's, I, I have the bills right in front of me, I won't bother reading them, they're fully available online. They're not scheduled yet to go to committee. They haven't gone to committee, no one's really talked about them yet. The other bill is Senate Bill two seven five, which is, requires the owner or possessor of a firearm to secure firearm with trigger and cable locks and a lock container, ammunition's separate, and all your firearms have to have cable locks on them at all time, whether you're carrying them or not. And it's just kind of, it, it, again, it's one of those big, long bills, it's presented by someone who doesn't have any understanding or knowledge of a firearm, at least from my perspective. It just, it's written from a very uneducated point of view. So I basically put together a letter for the commissioners to respond to this and sending to our legislators, our representatives, our senators and congressmen to just give them a little bit of an idea on where we stand as a board and where hopefully the majority of our county stands. We really haven't gone into this, I presented the letter to both of the gentlemen on the board to give me a few of their comments, but we haven't made any decision on this yet. I'm really just providing an update on where we are. If anyone wants a copy of this letter, they're more than welcome to come and talk to me about it in my office. Would the board like me to read any of it or?
I, I, I don't need you to read any of it, I appreciate the reworking that you've done. I'm sitting here reading it, I don't, the only part that I still.
Yeah.
Reaches out to me is the legislation for liberty, we're not setting our.
That has not been changed yet, that was a subject I meant to take that out, absolutely.
This is proposed legislation.
We're actually opposing legislation being made on some of these rights already that, on most, that was law.
That's the only thing at first, first look here, James, that after you read under and everything. And I, I would, if people do probably output a draft across to someplace, it'd be another thing, just, just in case somebody gets ahold of it that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Where that, right now it's in draft form, and I, I think your theory on giving us an update and everything is to sort of watch these bills and see what other, what may or may not go to committee for us to try to hit it hard and fast at that time. Not that it would, it's not bad to send something out now, but just as legislature, legislation's getting underway. Or if you just take a breath and look at it and see what's coming for sure. I don't think that ones want to make it to committee, but when if they water them down and what does make it to committee, there might be specifics that we would include into the letter at that time, I guess is where I'm going.
And, and, you know, the whole purpose for me was just to show our congressmen, senators and legislators and representatives where we stand as a unified county on any of these issues, you know?
And this is state legislation.
These are two Senate, Senate bills here in the state, yes.
State level.
There are more at the House, but I didn't feel like I wanted to muddy the water so much with. much with a bunch of other House bills and everything that are being presented at the national level.
Yeah, I think we need to do those individually.
And they might need to be. These were for the individual representatives, I think, and just talking to our representatives that we have access to right here locally. And it was something for us to discuss. And I wanted to show the public basically that these are things that we're looking at and we're taking seriously.
Absolutely. And I do believe that there's a great opportunity as you guys are going through your county college, especially during legislative year, to have better updates through AOC and be there where you're able to make some cold calls and maybe go see a representative or senator or whoever's on these committees. I think we're sitting in a place this year where Lake County's going to be represented well. So thank you.
I don't know anything.
Any more questions, anything like that? And I would be more than happy to read some of this if you guys are comfortable with that.
If you feel the need. I don't feel the need, but it's on you, James.
On quote, just commenting on a little bit of the rewording there in that one paragraph where I say, we as a board take the safety of our community very seriously and we agree that there are legitimate concerns in regards to gun and public safety. In turn, we encourage an alternative approach to the issue. And the second paragraph there, I say, rather than legislate, we encourage citizens to educate. And that goes into a little bit of where we feel, how we feel about things. We feel however that these bills would make safe firearm education impossible with a twenty rounds per month limitation. I can't train my wife how to shoot on twenty rounds per month and I can't train her on five rounds of, on a five-round mag, especially when you're dealing with the fact that most of these incidences of home invasion, things go from an average day to a horrible day in the very blink of an eye. And if you have five rounds only to respond to whatever situation the public might be facing, as an individual, I think that it actually puts our citizens in harm's way. And so I worded that out.
Then you have to unlock.
You have to unlock the trigger lock and get the ammunition and load the firearm and then, and prepare. And if you don't have any hesitation or any issues during that process, panic, trying to get the sleep out of your eye if it's in the dead of the night and waking up, you're still looking at a maximum, a minimum of half a minute if you don't have any of those issues. It's not enough to respond to a home invasion or something that happens. And where I come from, on the north end of the county, in Summer Lake, this is not at all bash on our law enforcement in any way, but we're good forty minutes before law enforcement gets there, if they're coming at all. And I, we've had incidences at my home where there have been calls to the sheriff's department, not this sheriff, half the sheriffs, where they were unable to respond, period. And if you take the citizen's ability away to defend themselves, their family, and their neighbor, I think this is, it goes against what we stand for as Americans and at the very least as the people in Lake County. So I think it's, it's just something that we kind of laid out. It's about a page long and full. It's taken up a little bit by just the format of the letter. But it's about a page of just where we stand. And if anyone's interested in it, they can gain access to it. And I think it's a good idea, Brad, to put draft across it just so it can't be copied and moved around. I originally had an idea, I reached out to several other counties that had done a similar letter to this in the past. And I've, I've, basically, this is all my wording. I don't, I've changed everything from the original letters that were presented and, but I think it's a good idea for all of us to kind of talk about this. And I wanted to be able to talk about it in regular sessions so the public knew where we stood and what we're working on.
Appreciate it very much. And it's very representative of the majority of Lake County, as your letter says. It's not singling out at all. It's the majority. And I do believe the majority of Lake County follows exactly the representation of that too.
Thank you.
Anything else on that? Now we'll go down to Melanie.
Yeah, Melanie.
Organizational property policy.
Return of organization property policy. I'd like to add some language, as we discussed earlier, to make sure that devices are free of passcodes and passwords so they're reusable to prevent future loss in the future. Excuse me, I redone it. We're unable to add language saying that there's financial liability at this time because of union contracts and other laws. So I'm representing this to you guys.
Okay, and Commissioner Albertson, does that fulfill when the table was moved forward? Sounds like within guidelines, we're not able to put some of the things maybe you were thinking in there. Is it okay for you to have it tomorrow?
Yeah, it's, it's not what I want. You don't always get what you want.
That's a law in.
I just think people should be fiscally responsible for something that's not their property, so.
I think there's avenues, legal act avenues, we can follow up with that if this happens again, I believe. Don't want to answer for legal counsel, say, not be in here. Our next item is assessor backup. This comes into one of your departments, even though it's talking about the assessor backup. This is I T backup.
So I bring you this forward after the conversion. Lake County put backing up assessor's files. They need to be backed up as soon as possible so we don't have the liability of a crash and lost information.
So my question to you, Melanie, is this is proposals per year, so it starts right away.
Yeah.
And within this budget year that we have, within your I T budget, our I T budget that you manage, is there funds available that you'd be able to do it within this year? And then come July one, will the budget will show appropriately?
Yeah, I have funds available for this.
Okay.
It's a hundred dollars a month for the backup and an eight hundred dollar initial setup cost.
Well, there's a lot of things need to be backed up, but we definitely don't want to lose things in the taxation side of the world, so.
All of our other servers are backed up.
Yep. All right.
I had a quick question on that, actually. Just from my background in I T, we used to have a saying in the programming side of the world where the cloud actually isn't a cloud, it's just another server somewhere else. The question is how much, I would ask is how much memory are we looking for to back up some of these things? What's the, what's the actual usage? And is it possible to store some of that here on a server of our own and not be renting or the cloud? Because that's, that's kind of what I'm looking at here is some of the cost is going to renting space out in the cloud.
Right, so it's redundant. We have a server for backups here and we back it up to the cloud. Say there's a flood or earthquake and that server here is demolished, we'll have a backup, which I feel it's essential to store our records redundantly.
Okay, that's fine.
Especially with, with assessor's office, that would be fun.
That would be really bad.
So leading off of what you said, James, is in the I T world and our contract on the I T side of the world with Brad Brown, Actech, is we are due for an update, especially with this Board of Commissioners, before we get into budgeting time because every year there's different things that go on. Melanie's been, she, she might need a contract. That doesn't make her an I T professional, but she has been given more and more education. But I think with your background, whenever we get that presentation from Brad Brown to us, you might have much better questions than this fifty-eight-year-old guy has towards the I T world.
Yeah, so, so that's fine. I don't have a problem with it at all. I don't.
Brad will build it, explain it.
I'd like to talk it over with Brad a little bit. In my experience, I am not a big fan of the cloud. Just, I mean, it was, it was a standard joke. None of us wanted to ever use the cloud just because it's not really a cloud and we don't know where those servers are. And we would use, what we would do is we would back up things to an additional server in another geographical location, but we knew where that was in order to keep things from happening. Yeah, go ahead, sorry, Melanie.
Sorry to interrupt you. Yeah, so we do know where the clouds are. There's one back east and there's another one in Texas.
Yep. Yeah, I know where those, where the server buildings are and everything, but it's just a matter of, I don't know, as a, as a general rule where I've worked before, a lot of us leaned, a lot of the I T guys leaned away from using the cloud. It can be a great benefit, but it also comes at a cost. And it was, it was an idea of keeping things as local as possible, but.
Yeah, so, so our other discussion through I T over the years is that backup, whatever you call it, not cloud, but server for the worst-case scenario. If there's a lake, a flood or whatever, here is our backup on here and where should we locate it?
Yeah.
So there's a lot of discussion we had on I T, but why don't we schedule for Mr. Brown before, for him to come do a presentation to the board that, and when I say that, be sure, and you know this, Melanie, try to schedule it for whenever he's coming down anyways, because there's quite a cost.
Yeah.
Whenever we ask him to come down compared to whenever he's coming down for normal business. I'd like to see that. Or I'll skip over to the next item in case Jake's wanting to come back. I don't know if he's going to make it.
What?
The vehicle purchase.
Oh, that, that's mine.
Okay.
But it involves his department, so I think that's the reason why he wanted to come back. So we'll, we'll move on down to the, to the cannon lease agreement and come back to vehicle purchase.
So as you guys know, I've been trying to get all of the cannon, all of the cannon machines on the same lease agreement, on the same A T. It's providing efficiencies and accounts payable with that process. There's some cost savings over the sixty months. It's not as great as the other departments have seen, but it is a savings nonetheless. I think we should make the switch from the Rico that is in the district attorney's office to the proposed cannon for cost savings.
So we act on that tomorrow. Any questions on that?
No.
AOC Legislative Committee member, I've sort of pushed that towards the two of you or several, not several meetings, you're thirty days into your, into your life as commissioner. So I don't know that tomorrow we can meet, if you guys have a chance to visit, if we need to appoint somebody tomorrow, we probably should right away. Or you guys have County College next week, if you want to get to County College. And I guess I would be comfortable with us going ahead, whichever one of you, after, you know, visit up there, would like to go on to that, if either one of you, to just go ahead and put that name in and we could verify that in the next meeting. That's where I'm at. That is without asking you guys what you've checked into or looked at.
I think we've, we've discussed it a few times. Like I told you guys before, but I'm definitely going to be on Naco on the Public Lands Committee. And I talked to McKenzie from AOC yesterday and she's still just waiting on Naco to get their paperwork and I'll be on their, on the Legislative Committee.
For AOC?
For AOC. I'm already on the actual committee and so if you would be willing to do that, that's fine with me. I just don't want to be, I don't want to stretch myself too thin on committee here and there, you know? I want to definitely be focused. We got to all be focused on what we're doing and that's the way I was looking at it, so.
Yeah, early on, there was a little bit of a misunderstanding, I think, with McKenzie and I were, I was under the impression that if you were going to be on the Naco side of things, that you have to be on the Legislative Committee as well. And that's where a lot of my misunderstanding was coming from, so. But I know you wanted to work with Naco as much as possible in relationship with public plans.
I really want to focus on that, so.
And that's really, really a good idea. And I'd be more than happy to, to take that seat on the Legislative Committee. I don't know yet exactly what committees I'd, I'd be interested in working with. It's a really big legislative year and I need to be very mindful of the cost and travel. I can cut costs a little bit. My sister lives in McMenville and it's quite a little, little bit of the drive there and I maybe cut the costs and stuff a little bit in hotels and.
So, well, we have a policy and all that.
Yes, I do. And we've gone over that a little bit. I'm trying to find ways of saving money, but.
The real cost is, is if we don't have somebody on the Legislative Committee, is the cost to our community.
We're, we're currently the only county that is not had a commissioner that has yet to take a seat on a Legislative Committee.
And so the other part on the cost savings is you can travel to the meetings that you want to and some of them you can do by phone or by teleconference call and stuff. So I really encourage to be very active in the Legislative Committee and very supportive of the travel. You get there, the lot comes back to us, especially from the east side. It's that east side voice over there where we need to have a lot of times. And the voice, we're unified as AOC for the most part, but sometimes it's the discussion in the committee.
Yep.
That brings something to light and you build that, that relationship.
Exactly.
And so I'm, I'm excited that you're interested in sitting on that. The other committees, you know, I go back to that same old theory, you will gravitate over the next year of what committees that you feel like your, your passion or what you can make a difference with, you know, for the social services, transportation or whatever it is. And that, that just sort of comes with your time in office, but write off Legislative Committee if we need somebody there.
Yeah.
So we can make that appointment tomorrow, it sounds like. All right. So we have one other thing. Is there any department updates today? We have two left. You guys don't have no scheduled department update?
Not scheduled.
Okay.
He's got his stress on.
He hasn't, he hasn't thrown it at me yet.
Not yet, but it's, you know, he gathered.
Go ahead, my friend.
I love my stickers there.
So moving back up, Jake isn't back here, but I believe Melanie can handle this just by Jake's on board. So we have the vehicle purchase, community corrections. We have approved that vehicle purchase. The person that we approved that purchase due through our process isn't able to fulfill that obligation based around the guidelines of the quotes that we got. So Melanie, go ahead or I can keep talking, one or the other.
Yeah, so I spoke to legal counsel. We have to reopen the process to ensure equitable opportunity for the bid process. So I just need your guys' approval to resubmit the R F Qs to make it, make appropriate accommodations for equal opportunity. The vendor that was awarded the bid was unable to fulfill their end of it, so it is what it is and we will just reopen it and try again.
Well, we basically have two options. We ended up, we tried to get three quotes, we got two quotes. An option would be to go to the other vendor if they were able to fill it, even if the cost is a little bit more. Or we can just go and get three quotes out there. Am I correct on that, Melanie?
They have to be, it would have to be the same cost that was awarded. They would have to meet that. They would have to meet that cost.
They would have to meet that cost.
Are you sure on that? It has to be the specs, but they were the second in line on, on the quotes. And if the first one falls out because they are not able to fulfill that, I believe that we could go with the next one even if the cost is a little bit more. But we can't just have them order a different year or a different style one, the original one at a higher cost.
No, it would have to be, we, they'd have to meet their bid that they quoted initially for the same specs.
Yeah, so probably over, over talking about it, it's, we just need to retract that one and part of the process. They weren't able to fulfill it, so we can offer a new RFQ requirement. We can do that tomorrow. With that, nothing else, ladies on updates?
Um, I would like to bring up just a little bit, Congressman Greg Walden will be visiting next Saturday to Lake County. He will be at the North Lake School and the gymnasium at ten AM on, uh, Saturday, the ninth of this month, so. Um, just for a town hall, uh, it's in the newspapers and it's, the public notices out. They made it public, I believe, on Friday. Um, but, uh, so over the weekend, people have already been asking questions about it. Folks will just have to go there and find out for themselves. And, uh, if they have any questions for the congressman, that's, that's their chance. And, uh, it's first time. I don't, I don't believe Congressman Walden's had town hall sessions on the north end of the county, um, too often. Uh, he, yeah, I, he may have had them in the past, but it's been a while. Uh, so this is a great opportunity for folks up on the north end and, um.
And the questions will be drawn.
Yes, that is correct, the questions will be drawn, I believe.
Yeah, Kate, Kate told me they will be drawn.
Well, uh, generally, the Democrats will draw, and I've never seen a Republican draw.
I was telling you that Caitlin told me.
Maybe they changed their way.
Well, we'll talk to Caitlin and then, no.
Caitlin told me.
Maybe they draw one of his town halls in another part of the state, maybe they decided to draw names. I don't know.
They, they are drawing names.
Oh, that's interesting, okay.
Interesting, I didn't know that.
I didn't either.
Um, go ahead, is that what you have? Uh, that and, uh, I believe, um, we, we, well, we kind of missed, uh, the mental health advisory meeting, uh, but I believe they're rescheduling, uh, they, uh, they have another one coming up on March first.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, I think Gobi though, they'll be coming later on this month as well. Um, and they're going to have some other meetings there, um, throughout the center.
Yeah, I, I think where we've contracted out mental health and the need, which is quite statute or ORS, whether to have the mental health advisory, uh, team is probably as important as it's ever been and as they're working on their bylaws, they still have some things on that.
Yep.
Um, I think if you can, whenever you're at AOC, get the updated versions of the responsibility of the advisory board and the mental, that's being the mental health authority, because they're the advisory to us as the mental health authority. And so there is guidelines you're supposed to do. And I'm, I'm thinking at times maybe the advisory committee, some of the people on it are maybe close to not following the scope of what really is what we're supposed to do.
Yeah.
There are, they report to us, that's what they do, they, they do that, so I'm encouraging you to.
Yeah, and, and I, even if they report to us, I like to go out there and kind of make sure that I'm available so that it, it encourages that participation so that, and they know that there's interest there to, for us to know what's going on. So that we can be involved if there is anything that we can help with pertaining to the welfare of our county that we're there, so.
So tomorrow we have the prison tour. Both of you guys gonna make that? I'm not sure that I will make that, I toured it several times, so. It'll give a great opportunity to see and ask a lot of questions. Friday, we have both SCOACT and SCOET in Clima Falls, um, over there. On both of them, there'll be, uh, time to vote in a chair, vice chair on both of them. So you guys will be seeing that happen on Friday. Um, so that takes us out of office for the full day. Um, next Monday, uh, I just, I haven't been able to read the email for sure, I just seen it come across my phone. Talking to Justin a little bit, it's cooperating agencies. Uh, the BLM's putting together a meeting for cooperating agencies from eight-thirty to four-thirty on Monday. My, my schedule's fairly open, Justin is not able to make it. But the other cooperating agency is the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Um, it's open to all three of us. I might be the one that's been going, feel free to come, go, don't go, whichever you want.
That's Monday the eleventh, correct?
Monday the eleventh, eight-thirty to four-thirty. So, um, that's a cooperating agency. Uh, have, uh, updates on Red Rock. Um, I've been doing those for probably a few years now. It's Thursday morning at nine, it's not a public meeting, it's updates. Um, uh, so I guess through that, I wanted to make sure and make both of you aware, um, to send in those if you'd like to, we just have to not, um, if you guys come and send in, I shouldn't ask questions that would lead towards a public meeting or anything like that, so. I'm not telling you not to come and I'm encouraging you to come if you'd like, you can just be cautious on the public meeting law side.
So where, when is that?
That will be nine o'clock on Thursday, um, right here in this, this room here, Darwin, myself, Kenny sent in a few.
That's it?
That's Thursday the fourteenth?
Seventh, this week.
This week.
It's Thursday the seventh.
And Kenny has sent in a few, um, and I sent in, and then.
And I just, I just did an inspection out there yesterday and so pegs are out, a couple pegs are out.
Yep.
They're electric. They're, they got full-on electricity now to their, uh, trailers. So that doesn't mean they're coming back in this week, in case anybody's worried.
I heard other people were worried, but I wasn't worried.
And I've been on the phone with myself.
So what time does that mean?
Nine.
Nine, nine o'clock. I had three different conference calls, several.
And it's in here, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. And so, um, then I have written down on the twelfth, housing at the hospital, I think, James, that's primarily you, three o'clock on that date, is that correct?
What date?
Uh, the twelfth of, uh, January, is that still?
I believe so, but that's, uh, getting close to when we have to go to, uh, AOC, so, but I believe I will be there.
I think if.
Commissioner, I believe the meeting on the twelfth at ten is opioid.
Say again?
I believe the meeting on the twelfth with the hospital, I don't believe that's housing, I believe that's opioid.
Housing meeting is the thirteenth, one fifteen.
Okay, is that the one?
The opioid meeting.
That's the one I sent you the deal, because I'm not.
Yes, that's right.
The opioid meeting is on the twelfth at ten o'clock. I'll be attending that one as well, to talk about treatment.
So for some reason I wrote down three o'clock on the twelfth for housing, so.
It might be just the thirteenth.
I might, I might wrote down the wrong date.
You said the opioid meeting's at ten? Yeah, so it's possible, it's still at three o'clock, it's just on the, they all have to check.
We'll check on that.
I have that on my calendar.
That's pretty much what I have, other than you guys hitting out for AOC next week, so.
Um, Jake, I see you came back, um, just to kind of update him on where we are, where, where we were with that last.
Yeah, Jake, we.
With the, yeah.
Yeah, we are already on the vehicle, um, we're going to, tomorrow we'll take the motion to go back out to get new RFQs. I think that's what you was wanting to come back for, was that.
That.
Yeah, so we, we gonna do it tomorrow.
Okay.
Anything else to come before the board? We will adjourn at one thirteen.